Good afternoon and howdy, everybody. The time is 5:31 PM. The date is April 23rd, Tuesday, and then, and we're here for the regular session of the Capel City Council. We do have a quorum present, so I'm calling the meeting to order. We're gonna suspend the rules and we are gonna take our work session, item number three, on the agenda first, followed by executive session. The public is welcome to join us for our work session in the first floor conference room. Thank you very much.
When you walked in on half of a conversation, you had no idea what you were talking about.
Fart trip pull.
You're going to Cancun.
Oh, oh.
Yeah.
It was a fart trip pull at Cancun.
And the city paid for it.
All right. The, the time is 5:32. We're gonna enter into a work session. We're gonna suspend the rules and do work session first. So Jason doesn't have to wait around all evening for us.
That works.
And then we'll do executive session after that.
Had you changed?
I don't know, but I certainly appreciate it. So thank you so much.
So we've got a couple of items before you're up, though.
Sure.
Well, I tell you what, just go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sort of handing it all out.
Every rule is gonna be suspended now.
Yeah.
Yeah, just say yes.
I am dead weight. Are you sending dead weight candidates for that?
Oh, my gosh.
Um.
So Kim, or did you do, need to do an introduction, or?
I can if you allow me.
Sure. I don't mind putting you on the spot.
We went straight to B.
Are you okay?
Three B. There we are, three B.
Change.
Good evening, Mayor Council. How are you this evening?
Practitionerian.
So we have, we have Jason Hughes, managing director of Hilltop Securities with us, and he's going to provide you some information concerning bonds, the rating agencies, fund balance, I don't know, bonds outstanding. So he's provided you a packet, and then he'll walk through that packet with you this evening. So Jason.
Hey, Mayor Council, good evening. Good to see you again, so, and I do appreciate you moving me up, so thank you. And it's probably for the best, since I see that you're eating, so if I go a little bit sooner, there's less chance that you'll fall asleep. So I'll try and go through pretty quickly, but as Kim said, what this is, is really a summary of the ratings, what they are, what they aren't, the rating process, and then I'll certainly talk a little bit more about Capel as it relates to the AAA, the fund balance, things of that nature. So while I'm going through this, please, by all means, stop me. If you'd like more information, let me go into more detail, I'd be happy to do that. So if you look on the first page there, characteristics of credit ratings, just to quickly go through, there's three main credit rating agencies, Moody's and S&amp;P being two of those three. Those are the two that Capel carries ratings with, and so I'll focus my comments on those. Couple of things that are important to remember, is ratings are really forward-looking, and whenever you think about that, they're forward-looking because the ratings are typically assigned and tied to the bonds that you have outstanding. And so your bonds generally are going to be outstanding for a period of 20 years, sometimes a little bit shorter, but in general, that 20 years. And so while they are forward-looking, they take into account past, present, future. And so certainly, the things that you have done as a council, whether that's putting policies in place, whether that's the financial performance that's gone on within the last couple of years, the actions that you take today, and then certainly looking at the future, how you plan for your CIP, for example, and things of that nature. So all of those do play into credit ratings. The credit ratings look at the state, or look at your state offices, but then they also take into account the national landscape. And so really, a credit rating for Capel should be equivalent to a credit rating for Boston, Massachusetts, Portland, Oregon. All of those should be basically the same. So if there's a AAA, again, in Oregon, if there's a AAA in Massachusetts, wherever, they should be basically equal ratings, if you will. Like I said, ratings are intended to be valid through the life of a bond issue, but they can certainly be changed, they can be withdrawn. And then the last thing is, you do not necessarily have to have ratings to issue debt, although the way that the Capel has sold its debt in the past, we generally have received a credit rating. So just very quickly going through, Moody's and S&amp;P use a scorecard methodology. And the reason they do that is because prior to 2007, 2008, it was a much more subjective rating, if you will. And so what that means is, they can sit there, they can go through it, and it wasn't uncommon, quite frankly, for us to have maybe a 10-minute call, answer a few questions, and then basically a rating got spit out. And like I said, it was very subjective, and it was kind of like, well, we think you're a double A. And in fact, with Moody's, we fought with them for a number of years because we couldn't get to the triple A. And it was really, well, your, your tax base is a little too small, or this or that, but there was nothing that they could point to and quantify. And so again, after 2007, 2008, and then what happened with Dodd-Frank, what they tried to do is they instituted the scorecard to make it more objective, right? So they could point to it and say, okay, this is awaiting the, we have finance, awaiting for the general economy, awaiting for debt, so on and so forth, and that could give you, or could basically give someone looking at it, how they came up with that credit rating. So they do go, they use a scorecard, they weight major rating factors. They do retain, though, what I call a qualitative ability to notch those ratings up or down. Said another way, so the rating analyst can come in and can basically say, look, this really isn't captured within our scorecard, but I'm putting this in because this is something that's happened, and so that gives the ability, again, to notch that rating up or down. And then as you see there, that final published rating is subject to the vote of a national rating committee, so it's not simply the rating analysts that we're talking to that are coming up with the rating. So as far as rating general obligation bonds, which is really what this presentation focuses on, you see there those main rating factor, factors, so economic or the economy is one component of that. Within that could be things like resident income, market value per capita, which obviously Capel scores very highly on. The financial, available fund balance and budgetary performance would be two examples of those. Debt, that debt not only is debt, but contingent liability, so that includes pension and OPEB, and I'll talk a little bit about how both Moody's and S&amp;P look at that. Management, kind of quote unquote. So this takes into account written policies and also policies that may be subject to annual review by council. This is something that has really taken on a lot more importance within the last five to 10 years, I'd say, is that management aspect of having those written policies. And then the last one is institutional framework. And all that simply is, is the state in which you reside, your ability to raise revenues and control expenses. And in Texas, you have a fairly high degree of latitude in which to do that. So all Texas cities have these same institutional framework score. And then, as you can see there, there's other sub-factors and metrics that get wrapped up into that. And then that last bullet point, so again, while we're talking about general obligation bonds, you also have certificates of obligation, and so those certificates of obligation are issued, they do have a tax pledge, but they also carry a water and sewer pledge as well. So as far as how we obtain a rating and that process that we go through, so if we are, let's say we, if the city is selling open market debt, so said another way, if you're going to have a negotiated or competitive sale on which you are going out, we're selling your debt to maybe a fund in New York, or a fund in San Francisco, or maybe even a mom and pop here in Capel, but we're doing it in open market, so we open it up, as the name implies. So in order to do that, we have to get a credit rating. And so what we do is, we request that rating for Moody's and S&amp;P, and so we're providing them information, typically the preliminary official statement, that's simply the marketing document that we use to go out and market, sell the debt. So we'll provide that, the audit, budget, things of that nature. Sometimes we have a small credit rating presentation. And then what we have done as of late is had conference calls, and certainly, once COVID hit, they basically scrapped doing in-person meetings, those are starting to come back a little bit, so we're starting to see that, but typically it's been via conference call. Normally, what they try to do is, they will have a Texas-based analyst working on it, and sometimes two Texas-based analysts working on it, but there may also be a national analyst as well. Both S&amp;P and Moody's do have offices in Dallas. So we have our call, we go through the information, we typically get a list of questions from them beforehand, so we answer all those questions. And sometimes those questions and that call, you get more questions, and so we go through and answer those. So it's just giving them all the information that they need. And typically, within a one-to-two week timeframe, they'll come back to us and say, okay, we've gone through the information, we've had our credit rating review, we've had our committee, this is the assigned rating. That rating, once assigned, doesn't change. The only way that changes is if we bring them material factual information that they did not look at the first time around, for whatever reason. That obviously has not been a problem with Capel, because we've enjoyed a AAA credit rating for some time now. But once they give us that credit rating, they will release a preliminary rating report, so the both rating agencies do a write-up. And again, it goes through and it summarizes that scorecard, it summarizes their findings, it summarizes how they get to, or got to the AAA credit rating that they have assigned. And then that final report is distributed. That final report's important because whenever we go to market and sell your debt, the buyers, the investors are looking at that, right? Because they want to make an informed decision on buying to be a Capel debt. And then as you see there, that last bullet point, the rating agency fees are paid for bond issuance costs. So as far as the long-term ratings, this is really on the left-hand side, again, it's standard pores on the far left, Moody's kind of in the middle, and this goes through, again, you do have AAA, there's nothing higher than that. We joked before about doing a quadruple A, they have not instituted that yet, but if they do, I assume that Capel would be one of the first to get it. But as you can see there, we've been AAA with S&amp;P since September of '08, AAA with Moody's since June of 2013. Again, I talked a little bit about that, roughly five years that it took us to get there with Moody's. And then on the right-hand side, it just goes through that there are various outlooks that they can assign, and Capel has stable outlooks on both of those ratings. I'm not gonna spend a whole lot of time, you'll turn with me to the next page, the next two pages, that kind of goes through the summary of the current credit ratings for both S&amp;P and Moody's. And again, it goes through those major points I talked about, economy, finance, debt, management, and institutional framework. The one thing that I wanted to point out, if you look at standard pores under debt and contingent liabilities, you have a weak debt profile. So let me take a step back. One of my partners that we hired, he's our in-house credit specialist, he was at S&amp;P for 20 years, and so I was talking about him, just in general, about the presentation. And what he told me as far as the weak debt profile, he said, that is language that, quote, is robotically tied, unquote, to the scorecard score. So said another way, basically, whenever you, whatever spits out in the scorecard, that's the language that gets assigned to it. Now, one of the reasons you have a weak, which is like probably the majority of Texas cities, is because Texas, again, has the ability to issue debt relatively easily under Texas statute. Whether that's GO bonds, certificates of obligation, you have, again, a lot more latitude to be able to raise those funds locally than other states do. It's not uncommon, other states, that there's either caps on the amount that can be issued, there's caps on the, on the amount of revenue that can be used to pay that debt, in some cases, you actually have states that issue debt on behalf of the cities. In Texas, again, that's not the case. Again, you can issue debt as needed, as long as it's for a qualified purpose. So again, very generally speaking, Texas cities generally have higher debt loads than national cities, or other national cities. So hence, the weak debt profile. It is not the comment on Capel, or anything like that, and I will say that the majority of my cities, if not all of them, have either weak, or very weak debt profiles. And in fact, I have other AAA cities that I represent that their debt profile is actually, quote, very weak, not just weak. So again, I just want to take a moment to kind of go through that, because I know whenever I'm talking with cities, that that's usually like, oh, gosh, what does that mean? Do we have too much debt, so on and so forth, and that's not the case. So then, again, on the second page, is Moody's, kind of goes through those same type items. If you'll turn with me to the page after that, Paul does, I didn't realize, I didn't have page numbers here. Factors that could lead to downgrade or downward pressure on rating. Whenever we get the credit rating, one of the nice things that both Moody's and S&amp;P include is a little summary that, again, talks about, these are the things that could upgrade, these are the things that downgrade. Upgrade, again, is not an option, since you're already AAA, but with S&amp;P, you see there, and this is language directly from them, weak and sustained budgetary performance. Again, this would be potential for a downgrade. Weakening reserve and liquidity position. And then for Moody's, kind of the same thing, different language, right? Material reduction of reserve levels, and then significant debt issuance without corresponding tax base growth. Generally speaking, whenever you see a downgrade, a downgrade occurs, not because one thing has gone wrong, but typically, multiple things have gone wrong, and in certain cases, it's multiple things that have gone wrong for a number of years. So said another way, and I'll talk about in just a second, the, the fund balance. You would have to see significant fund balance decline, probably over a number of years before you would see that downward pressure, obviously, in Capel's AAA credit rating. So that's one thing that's very nice. So turn with me to the following page. Fund balance and ratings, so again, on the right-hand, or bigger part on the left-hand, both Moody's and S&amp;P are at the AAA level, this does include Fitch, although you don't carry a Fitch rating. But what this goes through, if you look at the bottom, left-hand side, in the scorecard, it talks about where that fund balance is basically encapsulated within the scorecards, and what portion of that basically ties back to the fund balance. So that goes through, and then specifically at the very bottom, the fund balance for AAA for Moody's, for AAA level credits, excuse me, greater than 35% of reserves, for S&amp;P, it's greater than 15% of expenditures, so kind of some different ways that they look at that. But S&amp;P generally looks at the general fund balance and unrestricted cash reserves. Moody's takes a little bit different look at it, they look at fund balance, they look at the unrestricted cash, but they take a whole of government. So said another way, even though they're looking at the general fund, they're looking at it in comparison to your general fund, utility, utility fund, and other bonds. So that's what they mean by whole of government, so a little bit different way of looking at it. And then as you can see there, in that bottom right-hand corner, again, like I said, with the downgrades, if you have surpluses, that's obviously viewed very favorably. If you have periodic or budgeted drawdowns of fund balance, that's generally okay. One of the things is, obviously, if you start going below the AAA medians, or if you're doing it continuously, then that's going to be something that can put pressure on the credit rating. But again, that would be a significant decline, probably over a number of years, or specifically for cities. As far as where you stand, rating distribution for Texas cities, Moody's, you are one of the 8.3% that carry a AAA credit rating, given this is in Texas. And for S&amp;P, it's about 12% of their overall credit ratings are AAA, so very exclusive company that you've been in, and again, have been in for quite some time. You'll turn with me to the next page, Capel, and again, this is versus the Texas peers. So the rating agency sector outlooks, this is as of January, are all stable between the three major rating agencies. And then below that, you see in the middle, it's the medians and means for S&amp;P. And so like I talked about, the economy, the per capita income, market value per capita, you score extremely high, and certainly over the AAA thresholds. General fund balance as a percentage of expenditures, once again, very high, and that certainly helps towards that AAA credit rating. The fixed cost as a percent of expenditures, fixed cost details, debt service, pension, and OPEB. So that's how that's calculated. One of the other things I will tell you is, you can sit here and say, well, gosh, Kim, can you calculate back to the, so I'd love to see that. S&amp;P and Moody's both have kind of, for lack of a better term, proprietary ways of calculating it. And so they take different things in, and S&amp;P may count, may count one revenue stream, or one expense stream, and Moody's doesn't. Moody's also, as an example, will take your pension, and your pension rate, investment rate may be 8%. Well, they may say, well, based on the current market, we believe it's only 5.5%, so they'll change their calculations, or change your calculations, and go with their 5.5% rate. So, and that's one of the things that we've long had a beef with them, that that's not right, that's not how it should be done, but that's how they do it. And again, since they are private companies, and they ultimately are there to put a third-party independent report out, right, with their credit analysis, then it's something that they can effectively make their own rules, within reason. But again, I just wanted to kind of quickly go through, and then that bottom one goes through Moody's, kind of the same type items. The one thing I will tell you is, like, the fixed cost ratio, as opposed to looking at that as a percent of expenditures, they look at that as a percent of total governmental revenues, but again, all, to me, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense, but again, that's their rating methodology. But regardless, I just wanted to include those, so all very strong, all things that funnel into that AAA credit rating. So with that, I'd certainly be happy to answer more questions. Tab A is just a summary of outstanding debt, happy to walk through that if you'd like, and then Tab B has more detailed information on the rating methodology for both S&amp;P and Moody's.
Don.
Yes. What was it that finally got Moody over the hump, when they finally came around? Was it just longevity of stellar performance, or what finally got them past, if it was truly size difference?
It was, it was all of those things, but the main thing that I remember is the tax base finally got to the point where they considered it large enough to be in the AAA group.
Okay. So it did, so it did have to do with growth. I was thinking size-wise, we didn't really get all that much bigger, but I guess the tax base.
Some of that, too, and I'd have to go back and look, because I don't remember exactly when they, it wasn't a change in methodology, but they changed some of the things as far as how they looked at it, and they called it a recalibration.
Okay.
And I think whenever they did the recalibration, some of the things that they recalibrated helped also push it up to that AAA. But my recollection is that tax base was growing, and kind of got over their unspoken threshold to get there.
Okay. Jim, I got you just a second. Sure. It was my recollection, in 2013, we were the smallest city to get to AAA.
I think that's correct.
So that was part of what was going on. Yeah. Jim?
Oh, thanks, Mayor. So with respect to, like, on page 11, the Capel versus Texas peers, why is a higher percent of expenditures in relation to fixed cost better?
Well, that one is not necessarily better.
That just happens to be our number, or that's...
That just happens to be the number.
That's not something that they downgraded.
It's not. And again, that really goes into looking at those major categories, so while you may have a, again, quote-unquote, weak profile, and understanding this is Texas peers, the other items more than make up for that.
Well, so on the weak profile, we like, on our debt profile, is the ratio of the bond debt to the fund balance, what they're using? What's the metric that we're using to calculate a debt profile like that?
So it's debt service, pension, and OPEB, as compared to the governmental funds.
Okay. And then, is Moody's still the only rating agency that's looking to ESG as a component for their ratings?
The, to my knowledge, yes. Now, I will say that S&amp;P is coming out with some new methodology, but again, to my knowledge, yes, they're the only one that are actively doing that now.
Any chatter about them walking away from that as a component at some point?
We have heard that that is something that they are thinking about easing off of, but nothing official.
Okay. And one final question, does the rating cycle correspond to our fiscal year?
The rating cycle corresponds, as far as the information that they look at, yes, sir.
Okay.
And they generally will try and go and get the last audited. Now, we certainly, if we're mid-year, will provide them information about where we stand, where we think, for example, are we going to add to fund balance, decrease fund balance, things of that nature. But the information that they specifically look at is typically audited information.
So the way this is working, we, we provide all the requisite information to the ratings agencies, and we only hear from them if there's bad news, given our high rating.
So let me take a step back. So there's generally, a couple of times, whenever you get a credit rating, one, again, as I talked about, is if we're going out to issue debt, like what's potentially contemplated. But they also will do what they call a surveillance, and generally, what they do is, they try to keep the rating fresh, and they'll do that every two to maybe three years, if we haven't already been talking to them, because we have a new mission coming.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Kevin?
No, thank you, Mayor. So talking about revenue threats, as far as I goes, I have no idea if you're up to speed about our lawsuit with the comptroller.
Mm-hmm.
So obviously, that's a giant revenue threat that we're looking at. How does that factor in? How do the credit agencies look at that type of threat? Do they look at our adjustment to the potential threat, or what does that look like?
So that's actually something that we've talked with them about in the past, right? Whenever those changes came down, as far as sales tax, and point-of-sale tax, things like that. And so the one thing I will say is, my, Kim, staff were very proactive in basically saying, doing a very good summary, quite frankly, here's what's going on at the state, here's how we would address this, if we had, or if we did lose this revenue, we had to cut expenses, this is what the plan is. And so we have had those conversations with them. Obviously, to this point, they've said, it's still a AAA city. If there was something that in the future materially changed that, then could there be downward pressure? Yes. But I think generally, Capel has shown them that, again, we have a plan, here's how we can address it. I think that Capel has built up a lot of credit with them as far as what you've done from the council level. Pun intended, after the fact. But, so, I don't think that you would see something where it's necessarily a, okay, we're just going to, you know, downgrade to the medium. I don't know if you saw, there was, what was it, two weeks ago, Dan Patrick basically told the, whatever, House or Senate, go and figure out a way that we can stop levying property taxes, right? So this is something that I think everyone kind of acknowledges, that one, we don't have a state income tax, and in fact, that's prohibited, right? And two, the sales tax increase required to replace all of that would be so massive that it's very untenable. Those are the things, though, that I worry about, that Capel has no control of, right? And then the people that are crazy in Austin to run the state, basically do something like that, and kind of go off the cliff.
Listen to him.
That that can be, this is public, right, or not public?
Well, he's running, he's running their state house.
Oh, okay.
He's just crazy.
But no, in all seriousness, I am somewhat flip out, but those are things that could occur if they were to change that, that could have an impact that you wouldn't have anything that you can do about that. But again, to go back to your direct question, we have talked with them about that, and they've understood.
Thank you.
Yes.
So Jason, 12 years ago, when we were having this conversation about why we weren't AAA with Moody's, and we were asking you some very pointed questions about the rating criteria, and you were giving us, well, we don't really know, so have the, the rating agencies have actually admitted now that they have a scorecard?
Oh, absolutely. That part of it's public, so they have methodology, and in fact, maybe turn with me behind Tab B, just, and I'll very quickly touch on this. So if you go through this, these are the methodology scorecards for the GO bonds from both Moody's on the left, S&amp;P on the right. So it is a prescribed percentage, as you can see there, it has the weighting, it shows what they're looking at. Now, again, there's a lot of things that get crammed into each one of these sub-metrics, right? But this goes through, this, these are the things that they're looking at, and then actually, if you turn the next couple of pages, it gives you a little bit more detail, both on S&amp;P first, and the Moody's second. So, so we do have a better handle now, because, again, they do have this methodology, that we can go, we can look at and say, okay, we, plus or minus, should be able to have a pretty good idea of where that credit rating falls. But before then, there wasn't any kind of blueprint. I could sit and tell you, well, I think you're AAA, and here's why I think you should be AAA, and in fact, quite frankly, that's what we did with Moody's, is we did a full-blown presentation, and had everything in black and white, and said, look, here's what other cities are, here's what Capel is, and this is a AAA city, and then they finally acquiesced and gave you the AAAs.
Thank you for that.
I assume on this, on Moody's, I was gonna say on Moody's, to your point about the metrics, the problem, the piece they probably don't give you is, the result of each of those metrics, how they rate those individuals. Like, when they're coming up with the score, they don't tell you where the breakpoint is.
Right.
Like, right? That's the piece they don't necessarily reveal.
So they have ranges, right? But it can fall outside the range, and basically, what is not shown here is the, the addition into the core number, right? So they take all these weightings, and multiply those out, and then this number comes out that, but we don't necessarily see that. And then again, what we don't necessarily see are the notching factors. There's one city, I will tell you, and I won't mention their name, but they're AAA rated, and the only reason they're AAA rated is because they have a very, very high fund balance. Otherwise, their scorecard comes out to a double A. So they actually, their fund balance is high enough that at least that's one of the notching factors that puts them up to AAA.
So the last question for me.
Yes, sir.
Why has the number of cities that are now AAA increased over the last 10 years?
So what I would assume is, as you've seen Texas, the tax base and the growth that has come here, that's probably a big part of it, the general economy, so again, the economy encapsulates or houses the tax base component. Generally, it's been good times here, and in particular, if you think about before the state instituted some of their caps on the MNO spending... And in particular, if you think about before the state instituted some of their caps on the M and O spending. I would generally say that you've probably seen increasing fund balances because you couldn't do that, a lot of cities chose to do that. So I would guess that that's probably the reason why you've seen that. Now, what's interesting about that is you see that in context too with Texas cities issuing more debt, right? And they've issued more debt because, again, they've been growing, right? So what's been needed, if you sit and think about it, water, sewer, drainage, roads, all those things have been needed as Texas cities have grown. So generally, we've seen kind of this increase in debt. But the, the tax value increases have outstripped that. And so it's actually one of those weird things where you see the debt going up, the debt as a percentage to tax value actually go down.
Okay, thanks. Virdu?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Page 11.
Yes, sir.
So the rating agency sector outlook, and S and P is stable, Moody's is stable, Fitch is neutral. What are the other choices S and P has?
So they could say positive, they could say negative. And in fact, if you go back, what was that, March 2020 was basically when COVID hit the United States. I think it was a couple of months after that that, if, I don't remember exactly when it was or exactly what they had, but most of them had a negative outlook on that, right? As we had people staying at home, as you had businesses starting to close before there was kind of a widespread government money that was being sent to citizens, to businesses. Most of them had a negative outlook on the economy or on the sector outlook, if you will. But that was tied directly to COVID and the impact that COVID was having.
No page number, but there's four of them if you're looking, positive, stable, negative, and developing.
Very good.
Page three or four, four, five, six. It's on the page, it has the long-term ratings.
That page. So those are the options. And for instance, if you have a double A plus city and they're on the cusp of AAA but not quite there, for whatever reason, then it's not uncommon that they can have a double A plus rating with a positive outlook. If you have a city that maybe is a AAA and something's happened, or there's been a number of things that have happened, and they're no longer kind of within that AAA stratosphere, but they're not fully ready for a downgrade, for whatever reason, then you could have a AAA with a negative outlook.
So what's the neutral means?
I think neutral is just Fitch is stable, basically, it's the same.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
I must nerd out on this, but thank you very much, I do enjoy it. Don and I at least do, so.
I like it.
Probably, probably Jim. It's, it's, and thank you very much, Ian. It's very reassuring for us to see the work that the councils in the past have done. And what we're trying to continue to have led to this. So that, that makes, that gives you that, that feeling that this is a good place to be.
Absolutely.
So thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Those are the types of discussions that are nice to have. Item C, discussion on service organization process. Councilmember Carroll.
Who's leading this? Am I leading this?
Your name, your name is on the agenda, sir.
You're a real leader, son.
And was there a handout? Was the, that's not, is there, is it? What?
Nothing, we're looking forward to this.
You're doing great.
I don't need your critique. Okay, so what we will do, so we were tasked with service organizations looking at the process. If you'll remember, this, I say it started, what we always go, what we're always referred back to is a 2016 memo that was put together by you and Nancy and Marvin, right?
That's correct.
And that's been sort of our guideline for how, how do we go through these service organizations? So what we did is we got together and we're trying to figure out what needs to be addressed with this update? Or what do we think, do we struggle with? So here are the, there's two main things on here, and there's some subsets. So we will talk about which service organizations need to have a formal presentation with their application to the council. And then the second one has to do more with what do we do between April, April of each year, where we're monitoring the service organizations? And then there's, you know, six sub, sub-points under the monitoring piece. So those are the two, those are the two areas we're gonna go through, okay? And we'll just go through each one at a time. So number one, the criteria for how service organizations need, which ones need to have a formal presentation of their application to council. And what we did is we determined that for the most part, if it is a new, certainly a new service organization, or if it is a material increase from what we've done in the past, then yes, we need to have a presentation given to council. Otherwise, it's typically service organizations that we're familiar with, that we have consented to giving money to earlier. So if it's certainly, if it's stable or a decrease or a, an increase but a nominal increase, then we don't necessarily need to have a presentation. The caveat to that is council has, you know, certainly has the right to call for a presentation from any service organization at any time. So the way we broke it out, if you'll notice, basically, the two that are sort of, as far as staff is concerned, which ones they would point or sort of target to have a presentation would be the new, the new service organizations and the ones that are, the request is over $20,000 and the increase has been more than 50% of last year. So I'll pause for a second and see if there's questions on that concept.
Is that, I'm sorry, is that 50% is of the amount that increased the previous year of, or of the total amount?
Of, of what? Of last year's amount.
Like if they went from two to, they went to three?
If they went, let's say what a good example is, 15, they were going 15 up to 25. Am I going, yeah, that's over 50%, right? And your, your request is now over 20,000. So that one would be targeted for a presentation.
But it's not over 20,000?
Yeah. Well, the new request would be 15, if it's going from 15 to 25, so the new request is 25,000.
It would be, oh, so that's the amount of the request, I got it.
The 20,000 is the amount of the request.
Of the total new request.
Yeah, so you're talking about the larger request in general. For instance, if we went from eight to 12, which I think is one we've gone through in the past, that is, that's 50% increase, but that's not, but I say material enough, it's not large enough to necessarily warrant, unless council found reason to ask for a presentation. Yes?
So material means something to us. How did you, how did y'all come up with those parameters as far as the 20,000 and the 50%? Because I'm curious as to, like, I guess, I, I thought at first it was the one or the other type thing that it would fall under. But how often have we had something go, like a request be more than 50% that is equal to or more than, right? Greater than or equal to 20,000?
And I would say, so there's not a, there's not a scorecard or anything how we came up with it. But it was probably looking at which service organizations we have done in the past and what, which ones, because you're gonna have to help me. What do we have?
Why you would say it was another example?
Yeah.
Why is here?
Okay, why is here?
They came back and they said they wanted to do during the COVID childcare. And they were asking for a lot more money than the previous year. So that's another example we used.
I think there was only two or three that had been had that were probably material enough. And it is, it is, and I will have to, I will admit to you, it's a, it's a bias toward not doing presentations for known service organizations that are, you know, relatively small amounts.
And, and that's helpful, and that, and I kind of wanted to understand how y'all came to that. So that's perfect, thank you. And then the other question I had was, um, I don't remember, I'll have to come back to that.
Well, and to, to another example, sort of on the other end, so we do have a service organization that is, is in excess of $100,000. And, you know, from time to time, they'll come back and ask for another 10 or 15,000, which is not going to hit the 50%. But we also were biased toward that's, we're already giving this organization a relatively large amount, which means we have some comfort level with them already. So this, even though the increase is 15 or 20,000 in the scheme of how much we've already been comfortable giving, it's not material enough to necessarily need a presentation.
Right.
Example, Paula, is Metrocrest.
Right.
We give them 125,000. Sometimes they come back 10,000 more or 15,000 more.
So, okay, so let's use them as an example. They're at 135, they could come in and ask for 50, and that wouldn't trigger a review.
It would not trigger the automatic staff targeting them for a presentation. That's where the caveat that if, if council, because if, if I go back and I visited with Kim and Jessica on the sort of what the process is, and the process is, we get a list of everybody who submitted an application before we actually review them in the summer. And so we have the opportunity to at any moment say, no, this, even though this doesn't hit the 50% or whatever, this is material enough to, we think we would like to see a presentation. On the flip side, that particular example, management of that organization is in here probably annually anyway, giving us a presentation.
Well, and the other thing that just dawned on me that we don't have to give them the amount they asked for either.
That's true.
Okay, so that was, I was thinking this was an automatic, they come in and ask for 50%, then we give them, you know, no review and they get, we don't have to do that.
No, and that's, that's all these, these are all guidelines. These are all meant to be guardrails and sort of guidance for staff to, this is sort of the way we'll approach this, knowing that we, at any point, there could be a situation, there's gonna be unique situations that come up that we may want to see a presentation.
Got it.
Sorry, quick.
Brianna's had her hand up for a moment.
Well, and I remembered, um, because it had to do with the YMCA one during COVID. So what if it's a one-time ask for this, an increase that fits here, but it's only going to be one time? Because a lot of times it's like Metrocrest will say, right? Or any organization will say, we want an additional 50,000, but that's going to be our next, that's where we're gonna start from the following year. So what if it's a one-time?
Yeah, the council will have the discretion to have a presentation.
To decide, okay.
And we're, we, let me back up also, because what we're also continuing to rely on is we do get a relatively robust application package every year that's got the justification of what they're requesting, financial statements, a, a, a good bit of information to begin with. So we already have plenty of information that we're sort of making the judgment call on. And once, I'm gonna reiterate again, most of these service organizations are ones that we are familiar with. The ones we're not familiar with are, would be reviewed.
We're also fine-tuning that, that application process in a sense by having the verification.
Something, yeah, something we'll hit on, something we'll hit on here in a few minutes.
Kevin?
Two things. So the last bullet point there, council reserves right to request a presentation on any application. Is that council, as in four council members are requesting, is the recommendation that four council members would request a presentation? Or does any council member reserve the right to request a presentation? Just curious about.
That would seem to be our, our normal, the way we normally do things in work. I mean, we're not, I'm not writing, we weren't writing a policy as such, this is just guidance for how we manage things. So I would say how we normally decide things in here. Like, would you usually do, you gotta get four?
You need four for action? That's fine, I just.
That's my, that would be my opinion.
I just wanted to make sure that that was, that was just the understanding that everybody was, was.
Which is, and that's what we did, like last year, we did that. I think we went through the list and decided which ones wanted.
Could we go, Mark, go ahead, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go off on a tangent.
Well, you had another question, you had two.
Oh, you had two?
I have one more question on, um.
See? That happened to me.
Lost it.
It must have really.
Lost it, lost it, lost it.
We'll come back to you. Think hard. Mark?
It hurts.
Just wait till you get a little older. So there, my first line, your definition of new, like for instance, a couple of years ago, there was a request that came from the band.
For their trip.
Yeah, for their trip. Now, if they came back again, they're obviously not new, they, you know, they've, they've asked in the past, so does that?
Well.
That's on the criteria.
To me, new was, no, it wasn't a consecutive annual.
It's not a consecutive ask. I, I would say that we would have reverted that staff would target them for a presentation. Now, once we got in here and reviewed the list, we could say, no, we don't need to see a presentation on that one. But I think the way we were intending it is that that would, that would trigger a presentation. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And then I had one other question. I do remember. What about substantive change in council? Like when Nancy and Cliff and I all came on, you know, we didn't know any of these people. And it's kind of, I think it's unfair to the newcomers to just accept the status quo.
How would y'all answer that?
So that's, that's three people, right? If you get one more, you can have a presentation.
So actually, that's, that's something that we struggle with, with almost everything we do.
Yeah.
And, and it's, that is a very valid point. But we always struggle with how to, to bring the newly elected officials up to speed on all the topics. And this is a, I wish I had a good answer for you because it just, the question is, it just, sometimes it takes time. Man.
Maybe we should start recording them and we could say, go listen to this.
Yeah, this is your free word.
So where we started, we are distributing less than $300,000 yearly to service organization. One of our budget workshop is just taken for service organization only. And the consensus was, we probably don't need a presentation for the entire day of a budget workshop for this service organization. That's why you were saying in the beginning that we were biased against not having the presentation. That's, that's the starting point for us, that's the baseline.
Well, to, to support that, we spend more time on service organizations than we do on the budget. And it's about half of a percent of the budget.
Right, that's what I hear.
So we spend an inordinate amount of time on it. Could you go back to the previous page? I think it was the previous page. Yeah, on item two, this one hit me when I was looking at this earlier this year. A lot of the smaller organizations can't or don't, don't have the resources to do the, you know, the regular reporting. Did you guys talk about that at all?
We did. I have six more slides. Not to cut you off, but we do have.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you were, I thought you were.
Eight more slides to go. This is just the first one. Any other questions on this? And I will say, where we, we, we are also biased toward if we do have a presentation that, and I know this has been said before, but limit them to 10 minutes and they aim to be succinct and try to really limit that presentation as much as possible. Again, going back and relying on the fact that we have a robust application package that should have a lot of information in it. Any other questions on this one?
Kevin?
I remembered my question.
Okay.
So in the, it was brought up about the one-time ask. Does part of the application process include a caveat for, you know, let's you, I, I think it was Metrocrest, for example, that asked for that one-time ask or something like that, or no, it was the YMCA. Like a, a separate line item or separate requests, like, you know, additional one-time ask on there that might trigger that automatically?
I don't know that that application is like that, that would, I'm assuming they are left to ask however they're gonna, make their request however they're gonna do it. So I don't think there's necessarily a thing, I don't think that's more or less of that.
I just didn't know if that would be a help if that application process did have some, like if there was a box check that said. I just didn't know if that would be a help if that application process did have some, like if there was a box check that said like, additional one-time ask on this application, that could be that automatic staff trigger to recommend that there be a presentation due to this one-time ask. Or I'll just be quiet and not suggest it.
That would really only apply though if you had a, a organization that was submitting regular requests and then had like, like the why did that one year, another higher distinct request, as opposed to like what we were thinking about here, which is like, you know, the, the Gardenia Club comes out of the, out of nowhere and now they're making a request.
Yeah.
So it would be a new request.
And I would say, you know, the, the, the fact that they've got a one-time request would not trigger a presentation anyway. So even then marking it on there as one-time request.
I think about the historical society, right? Like, like, and, and they did a one-time request, but it was over two years, I believe, is how they framed it to us. Right? So just, there, you know, we do have a history of, of some of these that we, you know, that we do have history with that may do that additional.
Then that one would have hit it, because it would have blown the other.
Yes.
It was material.
If it had been over the twenty thousand dollar metric.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, and if, if the framework here, you think encapsulates, you know, those one-time requests at a level that is, that, you know, that is appropriate, that's fine. I just, you know, I didn't know if there was like a box that you could check that'd be like, we need to, we need to take a look at this.
Yes. Yeah, I did.
Go ahead. No, finish your talk.
No, no, I was just saying, I don't think we had, I don't, we did not necessarily contemplate. And I will, I will say, and I'll let you speak right after this, but they, uh, I would say we tried to look for things that were more efficient for staff, uh, make sure that there was not unnecessary information that is being collected or anything else. Try to streamline things as much for them as possible, make it easier for the service organizations, uh, and try to highlight the information we're already getting, making sure to keep us, uh, honed in on the right information. And then we do have something here in a minute we'll talk about that gives us sort of a check to indicate that we are actually, we are watching how they're spending their money.
Slide seven.
Or eight.
Okay.
Yeah, what I was gonna say, you mentioned historical society. The money they asked for the museum piece, that's separate.
Yeah, that's, that's fair.
So museum was a separate.
So that would trigger a new.
Yeah.
Okay.
Historical society, we were giving only ten thousand dollars. The museum, we were, they were asking for a hundred thousand, a hundred and seventy thousand. That's a consecutive year that you mentioned here. That's a separate, uh, ask for the council and council agreed.
And, and, and that's fair. So forget that.
You're on the roll, Bill. Let's stop you.
Okay, now, so the next six slides are two A, two B, two C, and so on. So here, the, here, this is all related to monitoring after the grant has been issued. And it, let me frame, set up, frame it up right. We approve them in what, July, I think is our workshop. Or I say, we approve them, we indicate we're gonna do it, but it doesn't actually get passed until the budget passes in August. And then the check doesn't get written until, what, October, after the New Year. So, and then you're gonna get a new application in April. So the monitoring we're talking about is all happening in the interim. And currently, I'm doing this off the top of my head, but basically we are to get quarterly financial statements plus a quarterly status report from each of these service organizations. Is that everything? I think that's everything that we're supposed to be getting.
Plus the annual rent application.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's just what happens quarterly in the interim. But remember, we don't even issue the money until October, and they're gonna reapply six months later. So these monitoring things, these are some tweaks we thought, uh, made sense from, for the monitoring. Number one, uh, we always talk about wanting quality of financial statements. So, um, they are required to give us an audit, which clearly not all the service organizations have an audit. And so what we are recommending that, we get an audit, Metrocrest is a good example, they're gonna have an audit, YMCA, I've gotta believe has got a, has an audit. But if they don't have an audit, Form 990 is the IRS form that they are required to turn into the government, and we are proposing that that would be sufficient, uh, for their annual financial statement. So that's the first piece of the monitoring change we're recommending. Any questions on that one? Frequency of financial statements, we are recommending that in the interim, based on that timeline I laid out a, a, a moment ago, uh, that we don't get interim financial statements. At least we don't require interim financial statements, interim quarterly statements or these status reports. Uh, I will point out, just like everything else, we always reserve the right to ask, well, and I would propose in the contracts, we have a clause in there that states we reserve the right to ask for any financial information at any point in time. But as far as what is required from them, we're proposing that there is no interim financial information or status reports that is requested. Any questions on that? Another big mitigant that we'll, I'll continue to harp on is, these are one-year contracts. They are all one-year contracts. They are refreshed, they are executed every year. So at anything, we are always within a year from getting another kiss at the pig and getting to renegotiate how that contract works.
There's no long-term liability with any of these.
Right. They're all one-year contracts. So as far as requiring an annual statement, um, it almost doesn't even make sense in a one-year contract, because you're gonna get one with the next application anyway. It's gonna be required to come in with the next application. Uh, the third one, frequency of quarterly reports, same thing. They, they were required to have quarterly status report. We're saying there would be no status reports required there. We always reserve the right to request any financial information at any point if we deemed it necessary for any reason, or staff deemed it necessary. Let me go back and just, I don't know if this is, I, I think this is sort of reiterating. I, I, the point number three here on the justification, if grant is for a specific purpose, contract can, if we deem it necessary, require the grant to be paid after the expenses incurred and documented. That was, that justification has sort of alleviated the need for having quarterly reports if we are reimbursing them. You know, we've had that situation come up where it's a specific need, they were gonna use the money for this purpose, and I think we wrote in the contract that we would reimburse them after the fact. So that is also a trick. And it's also, uh, a hammer we have in writing these, in writing these contracts to, if, if we felt we needed to, um, we don't need to get a bunch of status reports if we handle it this way. Yeah, we can, we can write the contract that way. Uh, the initial grant application, this is just saying that we, the initial grant application package will suffice for the length of the grant. So for most of our, or at least the standard will be that whatever we get in April should give us sufficient information for the, for the full year until that next. Once again, also homing in on, we don't even pay the money for five, five or six months after the application comes in. So we're only talking about October to April after the money's been paid. Funds held in a separate account, this is a nuance. I don't know how many of us even knew this may or may not have been required, but I think this is a longstanding clause in the contract that they, the funds, the funds that come from our city have to be held in a separate account. Uh, that is very difficult to enforce. It can be costly for, um, some of the service organizations. For someone like Metrocrest, it's probably just an annoyance, because we're such a small piece of their overall revenue pool that they have to keep in a separate account. It's probably just, it's a hassle even for them. And I don't know that it necessarily mitigates risk as far as the city goes materially. So we're recommending that they don't have to, they don't have to hold our funds in a separate account. They can pool them with everything else.
How about just segregate?
Segregate in.
Like a budget line item?
Well, we did not contemplate that.
Well, good. Normally with, with, with city funds, we have to make sure they're spent for a public purpose. And so that's one easy way to check.
We do have one verification on the next slide.
Yeah, and going, and then going back to that question though, how do we know currently how, if they're spending, even if they are segregated, how do we know that they're spending them on an appropriate, I mean, you know what I'm saying?
That's what they're spending it for. During the presentation or in the, in the application, they should tell you what they're spending it for. If they're funding someone that's doing public work, or they're buying this or buying that.
Yeah.
Check with Kim, and then what I have is, do you have a receipt for that which you told us you're gonna buy?
So this point maybe sort of gets you what you want. So this comes at the recommendation of, uh, some of the subcommittees. With the application process in April, if they have received grant funds the previous year from us, we are asking for a notarized listing, sources and uses, however you want to account for it, of how did our, how did they spend last year's grant money, or how was it expended, or what was it used for? Let me put it that way. Whether it was saved for the following year, or they bought photography equipment or what it was, but they were supposed to give us a list of how did you utilize last year's funds, uh, and notarize it. And this is, this is a new add. This would come with the application package, so it would not come at some other time, but it would, it would come and it would validate to us, um, how they spent those funds.
And the notarization would make it a sworn document. So. I know, I know. But it, it, it gives us something that, some affirmation.
We have the right to rely on it, towards your point.
Exactly.
Whether someone stretches the pieces.
And, and where we came down is, some of the organizations, our money is a big chunk of their, I mean, they, it's basically maybe not everything that they spend, but a lot of what they spend, rather than Metrocrest, it's a fraction.
Drop it in buckets.
Yes.
For some of the smaller ones, it's a huge chunk of whatever we do after.
So as far as a one-size-fits-all, we didn't, we came up with, this at least gives us a piece of paper that says, this is how you utilize our funds from last year's grant.
You're saying your taxes are turned.
You what?
You're saying your taxes are turned. Kind of like a purchase.
There you go. Yep. This is just reiterating mitigants for most of these recommendation, recommendations we have. We get a very robust application package in April. They're only one year in length. The grants are awarded in summer but not even paid to October, so a lot of the interim information is overly burdened some. There's only six months between being paid and the next year's application. And we always, always, always reserve the right to ask for whatever information we need on any particular situation if something comes up. So this is a summary of what the recommendations are. This is just what we just went through, the number one, and then the six from the monitoring. So these, this is a summary, so. Bijou, Jim, what have I, I mean, left out or?
No, no. The only question I have for the council is, uh, today, if any of us, council members goes for a, any other meeting, like Texas Municipal League, and we buy lunch for ten dollars, we come back, we have to submit a receipt to get the refund. Otherwise, we can't get paid. But we are not asking the service organization to provide receipts for everything they use the public money for. That's why we came up with the notarized statement saying they used taxpayers' money for the things they said they were gonna be used. Is that enough? Is my question to all of you?
Kind of like Bob said, for me, I mean, we have a right to rely on that. It's a sworn statement. And, you know, a lot of the stuff, all the quarterly reports, all like that, I mean, you know, I mean, staff has got to do something with all that too. So, you know, I mean, i- if, if we weren't using it for any reason, if it never came up or had any value, then it didn't make any sense to continue collecting.
Yeah, I think you have a right, I think. So if Kim sees something, or finance sees something that looks weird.
There's reservation rights on all of this.
She's gonna tell Mike, and Mike's gonna tell me, oh, we need to look at specifics, or maybe suspend next year until that gets cleaned up.
Oh, sure.
You've got, you've got something forward in there.
Kevin?
Just a historical question. Uh, I mean, have we ever had an issue with a service organization abusing funds or, or misusing funds or anything?
I don't recall being here, but I've had problems other places.
Yeah.
It does happen.
Yeah, we do.
I can't wait to have a time.
And, and some of it's burdened. Some of it.
So we'll give, we'll give you an example, Kevin, since you asked that question. He mentioned photographic equipments that, you know, service organizations are buying. He found a service organization buying their own family members to do the job and paying that person direct check. Is that acceptable?
Are you asking me or?
No, I'm just speaking about the council. You know, is that, you know, we don't know, right? So.
My HOA used to do it.
Okay. But is that their taxpayers' money?
It was residence money, so.
It was a bit heavier.
Sorry, I was just gonna say.
So he, John, John.
But I was gonna clarify, the financial statement, you're talking about that's being submitted with the, like, the receipts, right?
Expenses. They hired a, a, how many members.
Is it just a expense report, or is it actually a receipt that you're wanting all the?
It's not with the receipts.
It's not with the receipts?
It would just be sworn, it would just be an itemization, this is how we spent the money, thousand dollars here, thousand dollars there, and then they would, they would.
So it's just, yeah, just their words as what they spent, not actually, actually having a copy of a check or?
That's correct. Because you have to think about a Metrocrest, there's, I mean, there's no, they, they can't even tie our funds back directly to a receipt of something, right? They, they break it down to how many citizens and capel they service and what that cost and things like that. So that's, I assume, basically what Tracy does to us, he, he usually breaks that down, like how much they spend per capel citizen versus the other cities. That's probably what his report is. That's how he, that's how they spent the money.
So there's no threshold as to what amount is given, at what point you are gonna be needing certain receipts or nothing.
Well, I go back to, that falls outside this guidance. That falls more within, in April or in July, when we are making the decision whether to give the funds, we have those discussions and decide how, if we, if we need to have additional.
I just think that.
Calipers on that one.
I just think like organizations like Metrocrest, obviously there's finance, you know, department and so on, so that'll be managed. Like you said, it would be hard to itemize it versus a smaller organization that actually does individually writing checks. Not so much, right? But.
Comes, it goes back to materiality is what I would say on that, on the smaller ones.
Yeah, how much of a burden you want to impose on a smaller organization. That's why we're on the Form 990. We're on staff. That's why we're the Form 990 for an audited financial.
Form 990, 990 is just a simple form that just says you file tax, not itemize, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, but you, you can't expect like the orchestra to spend more money on an audit than they're spending on the entire organization. So, I mean, they're not gonna have an audited financial statement.
I'm just saying, Form 90, it's, 990 doesn't really give you anything other than the file tax.
Well, it gives financial, it's balance sheet and income statement.
What, when you file, it's just a easy form that just says you got less than fifty thousand.
I will clarify that. I'm almost positive the Form 990 is actually the one that not-for-profits or 501(c)(3) is, or I guess not-for-profits have to file. But it has financial statements in it.
No, I file it all every year for my organization. It's just a, you got, you got less than fifty thousand, that was it. No other statement, that's it.
Oh, yeah.
Nothing, no itemized, nothing. Just says.
The ones I've always seen have always had financial statements.
If it's less than fifty thousand, if it's less than fifty thousand, it's an easy form. You just file online, just said you got less than fifty thousand, and that's it. It just says you filed.
Okay, so you don't even have to.
No statement.
You don't even have to prove up your revenues or anything? You're just, okay.
To certify if you didn't spend more.
Right, that's right. That's all, that's all it does.
Maybe that needs to be revised. Maybe this needs to revise. In that case, we would just get an internal statement from them. I mean, which is what they provide to us.
That's why I was going back to saying, like, did you want just to say that they file, or just want something more?
Yeah, the intent was the Form 990, since they are saying, telling the government that, you know, these are, these are our numbers, that ought to be as good as an audit. It was basically meant to replace the audit statement and remove that burden.
Yeah, if we can't use a 990 because there's not enough specificity, I, I still don't think it's right to ask smaller organization to pay for it.
Oh, no, there's, there's no way that, they just get internal statements at that point.
Let's make a statement that they spent the money for the purposes of which it was awarded, and they swear to that as well. As part of verification, we can get a statement from them. I think you can rely on that. Because they know why they gave the money, they proved to you why you want to give them the money. So someone with the organization has sworn to you that's what they spent it for.
So you're not suggesting we should collect the receipts?
You can if you want to. This is, we have receipts and someone's gonna look at it. But it's a, it's a verified statement that the money was spent for the purposes intended of the grant. Easier than trying to retract receipts, at least for the small.
Brianna?
And to that point, that's what I was gonna ask. Don't, is there a language currently in our agreements that say something along the lines of we reserve the right to request any additional information or evidence or documents, right?
Do you write them?
Yeah, we, we have a, an audit, basically an audit.
Right, audit, yeah. So the boilerplate of, so at some point, we can always, like, if we are concerned or if we've heard that, that that particular organization has done something in another city and we want to ask, then we've got that all sort of all that. Yeah.
Well, they're submitting the, the sworn statement.
And that to get.
That they spent on, at the time they submit the grant, is what you said, so.
And that, that intent was, they provide that information to us, if there was anything in that sworn statement that I say alarm, just caused us concern, we would, that would go into our decision-making process for this, the upcoming grant.
I mean, you asked, we haven't had any issue.
Right.
Because.
But there might be.
There might be.
Exactly.
We don't know that.
Yes.
Unless somebody inside report to us, there is some wrongdoings happening, we will not know.
No, absolutely, yeah. No, and I hear you.
Well, that's why, that's why we want some verification showing, at this station, you know.
Some verification.
Yes, yeah.
That sworn statement saying we spent the money.
Oh, no, absolutely, and I, and I appreciate y'all bringing these different guardrails forward because just because the, in the past it hasn't happened, doesn't mean that it will not happen. There's always that potential.
And we don't know if it's happening either.
Or the, yeah.
Unless somebody complains in, from inside.
Right.
And I applaud you guys for coming up with that, because for the, up until now, we've never had that, we've never had those assurances, even a statement. Back when Brianna first got elected, they were reviewing every agency every year.
Yeah.
And they had no assurances that the money was being spent. It was just kind of a handshake deal. So, thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anything else? Any other questions?
Are there more?
With, with the, with the exception of the change to item number two, which, with the.
The audit, the statements?
The statements.
Yeah, and.
We could sell the.
I would say.
Fisneer or a sworn statement. Like the kind Bob was suggesting.
Wait, wait, I think we're, I think we're meshing. He, he's talking about the audit versus the Form 990.
Right.
Right.
Or a verified statement. They could, they could give them, they could do a financial statement, or IRS Form 990, or for the smaller ones, just to verify the statement.
And most of them have, isn't it true, most of them have some form of financial statement? Is that, or is that not true, the real small ones?
The real small ones are giving us their checking accounts.
Okay.
Bank statement? Bank, okay.
But you don't know, it's, I mean, it's just a check.
How, how do they spend the money, right?
Kevin?
No, I had nothing.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's the only change? Is that the only, is everybody okay with everything else?
Are we, okay, everybody okay with that?
One of the last things is, we have to ensure that the money is being spent for a public purpose, not for a private, means private group, that they're performing some public function. Elements or any purpose. Cause otherwise, it's constitutional violation for us to give money to a private party.
Are they all required to be 501(c)(3) services?
So that's, that's really what we're doing. Is the money being spent for an organization that's promoting something for the public. We have their internal papers.
Somebody wants us to.
Metrocrest. The quarter.
So we're under that requirement today, or that's, I mean, that's already, and how are we, how are we presently validating that now? We're not. Well, that's the thing is, I think. Uh, and that's, and that's still gonna, yeah, and that's still happening. We're betting upfront, this, what they're proposing is legitimate.
They're betting upfront and verifying the spend.
After, yeah, after the fact.
Kevin?
I just, so I mean, the only, the only thing that I would worry about is, what are the potential unintended consequences of doing this? I think the only way you find that is you run it for a year, and go, you know, apply this through the process, and, and kind of see.
I can, I can come up with a couple, and I'm gonna be very interested in seeing what happens, but, yeah, you're right. This is a.
You want them unless we try it?
And, and keep in mind, you guys have the ability to say no. You know, you, you've always got the ability to say no, so.
Or to request a presentation.
Exactly.
One of the unintended consequences might be that because they know the threshold, or they're not gonna be asked to present, that they'll always apply for something under that.
Yep. I hope that's gonna be number one, and it's not, it's a, it's gonna be a consequence.
Yeah, but I'm saying, that, that's one, right?
Yeah.
You can always ask.
And let, and let's go back, this is not necessarily published, guy, I mean, I'm not saying this, this is out there, but it's, no, I'm just saying, it's not in the application package. Oh, if, you know, if you're over twenty, if you're over this amount, you're gonna get asked to do a presentation. This will be much, this is more guidance for staff of how, how they're gonna.
But, John, to your point, sorry, you finished.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, to your point, yeah, they don't have to do the presentation, but they have to give us a statement how they spent the money.
Sure. But I'm saying, they know that they don't have to present it, and, yeah.
Well, that's what we are trying to get away from, right? We are taking one full budget workshop for service organizations.
So I have a question. So what do we do with our extra workshop?
That's, that's how it's, Kim's got her. Jim, that's a good point. See, I don't have to be there, you guys should be there.
We must be.
Hey, guys, we've actually got a, even though the council meeting is fairly light, we've got two big items coming up, so we need to move along here. Yeah, we do.
I'm good.
Is everybody good with the?
Yes.
I'm up for trying it, yeah.
I think so. Okay, good, thank you.
Good job.
To the three of you guys, thank you very much. Since I'm the only person that was on the committee before, the changes that we made back then were just as big as these, because we went from reviewing everybody to not reviewing everybody. Yeah, and, and so I'm, I'm very encouraged by this.
And I'll tell you. I'll tell you, I'll tell you what I had done, and I meant to get it passed out to y'all, and I can send it to you, is I took your, y'all's memo, the four-page memo, and basically put a two-page memo from us that on top of that is basically is an addendum to what y'all did, so we have basically the whole piece, all that guidance sorted together.
We have a record of the thought process of that.
So, yeah, so it's actually one, and I can send that around to y'all.
All right, well, thank you very much. Good job. All right, let's move on. Item A is discussion regarding the agenda items, one item. We have no consent agenda tonight, so we will need a separate motion to approve the minutes.
Okay.
Wait.
We need a separate.
So we have, we have no consent agenda, which is where we normally do the minutes, so we won't.
So minutes are its own thing.
Yes, the minutes are their own thing.
Why aren't they in here?
There are, item number seven.
Oh, consider approval minutes. There they are.
Just a clarification question, based on the email that was sent out, is the, the revised minutes part of this, what we're doing?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So Kevin's gonna make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Any other item, agenda items?
Donald's. I'm gonna call for executive session.
Prouddiness.
All right, the time is 6:49, we're at the end of work session. We will move into executive session as soon as I go out and make the announcement. Good evening, everybody. The time is 6:49 PM. We have recessed from work session, and we are moving into executive session in the first floor conference room. At the end of the executive session, we will come out and begin the city council meeting at 7:30 PM. Thank you very much.
We renewed the contract in 2020 for five years, the date was 5/31/2026. And then, the reason why we have this suggestion is if the, if the council were to say, you know, you want to have some negotiation, great, and they timeline those, that they aren't successful, or you would tell us you're actually failed, you didn't even know that last minute fifteen days, right? You were probably talking about the process, you got what happened last time, and it's converging with purpose, that's about the problem. So that's, it's just very difficult. And so, the reason we have the instruction, uh, in the market, it's just kind of set the table, right, we're talking about how venture, what happened in the marketplace, and who are the partners, right, and what's going on. Uh, and then so, we're doing an analysis of, uh, with, with the public services about, uh, how the city used to deal with franchise deals. And if you remember, when the outlier at fifteen percent, the majority of them were around ten percent of the franchise fee. So my best point is that you can do the, of bottom line, so. How much of it, after, with the graphics, can you flow it on a little bit? About fifteen percent for the city of Capella, and then ten percent for the majority cities, and five, and for the top ones and most. Uh, basically, it's a kind of, like our viability, they pay a franchise fee, they're using the public base, the public money, the public street, and they try to contribute. So that's, you cover a group of people, you have an use that, that, okay, I can go, go. Okay, the reason why I'm having this out, first of all, I want you to have a hand in your hand, and secondly, I want you to be able to live very closely because it's not, I could tell you, not good. Um, so the reason why, the way I'm, the reason that I'm showing you that is that you cannot live at the total kind of total monthly rate and have like a living person out of that, because each and city has multiple variables in the way they're saving. So, a lot of money is a little easier to read, a little easier to give to you. But basically, if it's in the red, it's completely different from Capella, and if it's in the green, it's not that. There's no one exactly who matches that. The franchise fee, the greenway, you can see where the bulk is different, capital has a different weight, it's different, with the exception of South Bay, Nevada. Um, and then again, when you, uh, you know, part of the franchise fee, that keeps into that total, kind of, total. So, I, I'm not gonna leave, which I'll. Is that somewhat clear about what it's trying to tell you in terms of communication clarity? Absolutely. Okay. Um, so, here's what happens is, if you'll now take this one, as a current reference. So, what, um, what the public service interests were, were, um, oh, sorry, I can't hear. Make sure, I'm sorry. Um, what they interest were, is a proposal that with our franchise fee at fifteen percent, uh, their, uh, that, that total monthly cost in 2026 goes to twenty-four. Okay, and that's their kind of shot out of the barrel. The main thing about that, that was providing the same level of service, is right, it's providing the same level of service, only the difference is the income cost. Right, so it's still two times the lead, it's still in the ball, it's still greenway, it's still the type they want to lead, and that's the same service, right? And I'm just to demonstrate for you, the impact of the franchise fee, that's what I'm showing you, the franchise fee at fifteen, twelve, and ten percent, just to show you what it's. Um, so, the reason I'm using that, I always love the public, like, the money. So the franchise fees are charged by all of these people. You know, I mean, like, like, if we change the franchise fee under this agreement, does that affect any other service numbers? So like, I just want to make sure that, that it only applies to, to, yeah, to, to, in terms of. And so, I, I kind of lose your numbers today, okay, in terms of, but what I was thinking you, for this, uh, funding, is if the franchise fee is actually fifteen, that's a fifteen percent and a twelve percent. The profit is going to be, but it's, it's about a two hundred thousand dollars on the residential side, right, in terms of that. But to go with the franchise fee at ten percent, it's almost, uh, almost fifteen, seven, eight hundred thousand dollars. So, yeah, which I'm going to do to the city. I'm trying to recollect what you, you, uh, on residential sides, that they love, that, oh, sorry, oh, like, I have actually got a key that's waiting. Well, I'm just looking at that, so I'm just looking, I want you guys to take a look and realize that, uh, the services that we're getting, we're literally paying more for recycling and, uh, greenways, and the catch. And I don't know that two thousand, you mean, tomorrow? Yeah. I, I put out recycling once a week, I barely, barely put out garbage flipping, maybe four times a year. And I'm paying five thousand Sunday attempt. So, I'm not advocating that we even consider doing whatever it is, but I think that would be very politically and corporately unpopular. So a lot of these things that we're doing, we're doing related to the, to the environment of the citizens. Uh, one thing I wish I did was that hazardous rates, um, told you about, ten percent of our recipients ever used that, and only these at one time a year. So the usage of the H, H government is extremely bad. Uh, to your, uh, for your government, on the, on the, on resident, uh, uh, teachers, teachers, and. So, the usage of the H, H government is extremely bad, uh, to your question, for your government, on the, well, on residential, uh, uh, figures, it's easy to spend a thousand dollars. So, other than doing that, I think, I think that's a whole ton of noise, right? The reason why I want you to lose the numbers is because I've been making numbers to keep them in a good way, and, uh, just, there's just lots of different ways to practice, like, look. But, uh, on the sheet that you have in front of you, just for comparison purposes, if you look to the far, the sheet with the yellow flag, to the far right, the current twenty twenty four estimated rate back down, for comparison purposes. You know, trash, if it's six eighty nine, or is trash under their proposal, is it eight seventy? Um, basically, so, uh, four forty seven versus five fifty five, greenways, four fifty nine versus five eighty, household hazardous rates, eighty seven, seventy five, and so on. Right, so, I'm just, I'm trying to, the way you said eight dollars, fifty twenty five dollars, and that's a total of two years. Uh, again, Phil and I are writing numbers and everything along those lines, um, if you tell us that we thought you were doing the revenue rate, um, and obviously the real question is moment. We think, we think this is very high, and we think they've done our analysis, that we've got some, we've got some things to negotiate with them. But they may come back and say, no, we don't care, it's, like, we just wanna have this. For you, there's a question that, that you didn't ask, is whether we do need to make a decision now, or to negotiate for a new contract, uh, on the contract, or do we go out? So, give me that, mm, if, uh, I'm not, you know? So, so, looking at this as a current, current portion of the register, that doesn't include the contract. See, that's right, so the, so they're, they're like, when you look though, and you look at that, they're, they're under the track, like, on greenways, and household hazardous rates. That adds up to, um, twenty one, twenty two, right? And our rate, uh, you know, if we're at that franchise fee of fifteen eighty two, or, or if that's to convert that, right, which is, right, so. And, and to, today's rate, with that fifteen eighty two, their rate, it's in the infant, they're expecting to move back to a little four dollars, you know? So, let me, let me just put this out there as well. Um, so our current price of four franchise fees, fifteen eighty two, their proposal is twenty one, twenty two. If you carry our contract out to twenty twenty six, which you are in contract with them, when you take in their three percent, three percent increase, so in twenty twenty six, our rate will be seventeen eighty two for the franchise fee. And that's a three, even, a couple of hours, you know, I don't know, that, right? But what they're, we want to, they're giving numbers, is they're giving us some indication that they, they think the franchise fee is fifteen eighty two. It's weird, ten, ten percent in the franchise fee, but they've taken five percent, had discussions with them, that's a twenty four and five, that's really hard to think there's any proportion. But that's on the franchise fee, I mean, I'm sorry, that's on, that's a sixteen for their increase? Because we want, we don't wanna have what the other cities have, which is a combination of CPI calculation, and a full cost calculation, and a cost of government calculation. We don't wanna deal with capital, and the public service is totally with their, happy to have a fix, so. So, that might be used in the most, in the next twenty five hours, or usually, somewhere in that range, or so. So, that's fifteen percent, they're, these weren't in backfill, so you can take the photo, or all of that, or? Uh, but, they take, yes, they manage their capital. And they want to make the changes, but you know, um, they, we expect that, like, if anything, you expect others to, like, understand, but we need to keep the money, so. No, okay, okay, you heard it, okay. Uh, in their contract, what you have, you have a three percent calculator, that is, that's guaranteed in the contract. So, everywhere, it's kind of a whole different, the white water, the water base, it's all different, that might be, you know? Uh, now, we've got a separate contract, so you can use, uh, that, uh, that's what it's, you know? If you are managing, you can, there you go. That's my contract right now, from the board. So, the contract for twenty twenty six going forward, will have a U S select number, uh, they, one is, it's that picture, so they're, they told they will probably set five percent. When you have a woman in person, they're trying to create a contract, uh, that, uh, well, I think that's why we're coming down on the fifth, and, I mean, we already, I mean, we did it from yesterday, and we've got to set five percent, so. Uh, yeah, but we, you know, this is a quick one on that, back on that contract with, uh, the three percent, basically, early, completely, that's when, when you, you know, they're, they're, that's one of the things that I'm using, I'm finding out, is that. With our contract, I mean, we, the last couple of years, the situation's up to seventy, seventy nine percent, that'll be in my mind, so. I don't want to attach it to, uh, to, to, uh, the, 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 so, 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 first, we must, first, we need to capture, we have to, you know, like, example, exactly. Secondly, um, there's some factors, like the fuel matters, the economy, they're pulling up a noun, and, you know, like, you'd like to sell them, sell them as, and make it free, and then you're gonna have that on top of whatever it's like, you know? So, it's not just CPI, that's, there's other things involved with that, okay? So, we can, you know, and say, we're gonna, uh, 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 that, uh, that's what we do that. Remind me, in that conversation, what, what are you saying, like, we're not participating in the work, regardless of after what, with new contract, absolutely, okay? So, well, obviously, we're in, uh, we're in, so with that buy up, we need by regional negotiating, like, we got to be able to get the first month, so there's saving money, right, on that side. So, what is that, you know, um, I, I would call this guy, they're saying one person, then they're increasing rates, they're doing that, so, so, I think, I think those are, are, are part of the discussion, I believe, of, of. When we, when we sat down, when we sat down with Jerry, and he jumped in his car, so I'm like, you're, uh, and, uh, and, uh, and so, it was, it was something that, because the area, the area was active, so, and that's where, you know? The future is, is obviously, I mean, it's, it's gonna be, I think, that, I think, that's what I'm asking, and, and, I was gonna associate it, some standpoint, I'm not saying that I'm talking to somebody.
... we don't have access to management, so we have a management access fee. But city, uh, just people, so it's always a little too complicated to make it through that. You can help you with more of the council members who want to enter the chat, but it's usually a pretty difficult topic to get into. So if you're in state, you can, is that right? Yeah, those people are used, that's what I'm saying, you know, we've got that for a long time, we've been, you know, we've been doing very often, and having a long term reason where you want to go to people in, you know, it's totally explained, they're locked in. I mean, maybe they're like, that's a problem, but I know what it's going to be, but you're already in, over, I don't know if you have that, so. So, one of the things that's really important is the connection to management. Uh, if you look at the, uh, you have all these, uh, commercial, uh, just, you can charge the working class, so to ask, do you ask, go out, do you, that's when you come back to us and, so, other things, if you're kind of, if you're not, you know, you, you don't think about that unless you're in a, you know, if you're, for that, essentially, if you're, if you're actually, if you're, that for that, one thing, you can actually make the money, or I think the money, that we might, that we, like, so, so, one thing that might need to, uh, buy, is, are, do you know, do you go back and go out to the market and give out the entire job, probably even just here in the public? And if you're understanding this, by the second meeting in May, that's the time to go, uh, so, uh, I have a vulnerable challenge of being able to pass it to the state. Now, if I knew, and this is what we said, you'd like to do, in counter, either, and act on it again, and, and say, but here, the deal here, uh, you want me to work on this a little more, or are you comfortable with your yard? But at least you can have, uh, you can have some, you know, and whether you've got a contract, it's probably, uh, certainly not good, or, no, it's probably, I don't know, I can talk to, uh, I think, so, you guys, I'm, I was, I was, I was, I was, I was, I was, so, the time was, because I was, I'm not going to, you know, if you go out, uh, if you, if you go, look, it's probably like, you know, we're not going to go, it's anything off, so, um, the, 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 I actually think there's a couple of, it's, he doesn't, uh, and, and, you know, like, see, the, the, that would be, is that, one, that certainly competing, right, and if, and if they don't have enough, uh, and, they know, it's probably , I think, down in the street, uh, it was my thought, it was, uh, that, 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 that , they, 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 I, 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 I'm concerned when I have a, with, with the, the, the contract, essentially, the, any of the people, risk, you know, the, the , uh, the, the, uh, I would, I would, I would, I would, uh, or, or, uh, that, that, that , uh, so, most, most, uh, what, you know, uh, the, 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 uh, policy, right, so, I think, I think, I think, uh, that, that, uh, that, that, uh, that, uh, that, uh, that , uh, I think, uh, they, 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 uh, they, 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 uh, they, they, uh, so, they're, they're, sort of, they, 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 they're not, um, so, the, the, uh, sure, five years, probably, but I think that's how hard it is to, you know, uh, but, no, we're not, uh, uh, and if you want, uh, that, I'm saying, I'm going to do that, like, longer, there, there, that makes it more, not to close it down, but to your point, some of those, which, you know, the, the escalator, something, uh, what , what, 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 uh, you, 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 I realize, because, uh, the, 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 uh, line, uh, and, and, so, you know, uh, well, that's what, you, that definitely means when you say, but, uh, 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 I was just curious how long we've been with the, would you, would you, before, and, and I look back, uh, so, so, long, yeah, I, 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 uh, twenty fourteen, uh, twenty fourteen.
Well, and I, I just think there was so much that we met through in the negotiations with the Super Public, and, um, you know, I think that they're obviously not going to take that out, and I remember, uh, talking through that, like, I think, right, but there were also, uh, involved in everything that we're doing, um, that I, you know, as you said, the other one was C W D, but, that, but, like, so, we were, even if you, yeah, you already, yeah, you already, you already know, right, you already have an idea of what's to come, so, knowing that, I think I would rather just figure out how much we can, uh, and, 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 uh, uh, twenty fourteen, we were shopping, uh, better customers. Right, and, and, um, last year, when you were talking earlier about physical services that we have, and, 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 so, but, we're not hoping to necessarily change.
No, one of the things that, well, that's about, uh, that, you know, to, 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 to,[684.81]
Good evening, everybody. The time is 7:32 PM, and I think we have a quorum present or on the way. This is the April 23 meeting of the Capella City Council. We have previously called the meeting to order, and we have recessed out of executive session. So our first item is our invocation, which will be given by Prenomar Shrikanth. Will you please, please rise?
Oh God, as we gather, we call upon you to bless the congregation with your compassion and immeasurable love. Grant us wisdom as we pursue nothing else but your purpose for our lives, serving the community in the best way possible. God, recalibrate our intentions, draw us closer to yourself if we stray from the path of righteousness, while we serve your people, for you are our unwavering guide, protector, and shield. Let your peace and kindness rain down on us. Grant us the strength to embrace the challenges of each day with grace and resilience. May our actions and words reflect your love and mercy, bringing hope and healing to those around us. As we strive to build a better world, may your divine wisdom enlighten our choices, and may your spirit infuse our endeavors with purpose and meaning. Open our hearts to the needs of others that we may serve selflessly and humbly. Amen. Om shanti shanti shanti.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. I should have said that Ms. Shrikanth is with our Allies Interface Group, and we really appreciate her being here this evening to give the invocation, so thank you very much. So item number eight on our agenda is our citizens' appearance. And persons wishing to speak during the citizens' appearance or the public hearings must sign the appropriate register outside the council chambers. Persons wishing to speak must list their address as well. Presentations by individuals shall be limited to two minutes each, and individual speaker's time may be extended by an additional two minutes with the approval of the majority of the council members present. Person signed up to speak will be called in the order they signed up. No personal attacks by any speaker shall be made against any member of the council, the mayor, individual, group, or corporation. There will be no comments or deliberations from the mayor or the city council due to the requirements of the Texas Open Meetings Records Act. Once the timer sounds at two minutes, the city secretary will break in and make the request to the mayor and council if they would like to extend the speaker's time. We do have two people that have signed up tonight to speak, and the first one is Mr. Jack Henderson. Welcome, sir. Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Jack Henderson. I live at 617 Pheasant Lane here in Capella.
So, Mr. Henderson, in terms of public transparency, no one behind you can see the sign? So, council?
I'm good. When I start, I just want to be on the roll.
You can, you can, you can be on the roll for four minutes.
Four minutes, thank you, sir. Okay, here we go. Dr. Jack Henderson, 617 Pheasant Lane. I want to begin by saying thank you to the city council, city management, and community experiences. Pickleball was being played at the senior center, core, and wagon wheel prior to COVID. When the city reopened after COVID, all pickleball had been moved to wagon wheel. The decision to move pickleball out of the senior center and core was met with displeasure. Unsatisfied with explanation given, a decision was made to move beyond management and take the matter to the Parks and Rec Board and city council. Older seniors ages 65 to 79 and super seniors ages 80-plus wanted to play in a climate-controlled environment and not risk their lives during the high days of summer and cold weather winter. Several seniors agreed to take the lead, requesting the return of pickleball to the facility most suited for pickleball. The better facility for pickleball was the core. Pickleball supporters wished us luck, but chose to remain in the shadows. The seniors who were supposed to accompany us to meet then changed and started to discourage my twin and me for our perseverance. This was due to the acrimony they experienced. The acrimony continued until there was only one man standing and speaking to the council. Those in the shadows remained in the shadows. City councils, city management, and community experiences were asked repeatedly to reconsider the decision to move pickleball from the core to wagon wheel. Finally, a decision was made to return pickleball to the core in a limited way. Pickleball started out slow, but soon started to pick up as word of mouth spread the news that pickleball had returned to the core. Pickleball filled an underutilized block of town with room for expansion. Pickleball started with one game of play with four players. There are now four games being played with four players at the same time with people waiting to play. Community experiences responded to meet the growing demand. Time slots were extended, and one additional day added for playing pickleball. Community experiences continue to address the growth of pickleball players. When the curtain had divided, the GM needed repair replacement. Community experiences acted quickly to resolve the issue. The displacement of taxpaying residents by nonresidents has to be addressed. Displacement of residents seem to occur across multiple city activities and programs. The elephant in the system that needs to be addressed is data clearly showing the number of nonresidents utilizing our program to services. Some nonresidents, with the support of a few residents, try to game the system. Nonresidents are not entitled to all the privileges of taxpayer resident. As my twin would say, if we're going to build a new recreation facility that includes pickleball, it needs to be an indoor climate-controlled structure on the hill in front of the senior center on Bethel Road in Old Town. Pickleball is not going away, and neither am I. Thank you for what you've already done to make Capella a better place to live. Thank you again for what you will do in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight. All right, item number seven is, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. We did have two people signed up to speak tonight, and I almost forgot Ms. McCarthy. The next person is Sue McCarthy. Ma'am, you should have stood up and yelled at me.
That's all right.
I got two people up here reminding me, so we're good. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Sue McCarthy, 456 Woodway here in Capella, Texas. And my first question is about the proposition of doing a Zoom call slash council meeting, because it's not always easy to make it to a council meeting when, you know, you have out-of-town business, you travel a lot. And I was wondering if that would ever be a possibility with technology, the way it is, that we could do a dual, you know, where we could enter or interact from a Zoom call as well as appear in public in person? That's one question that I had. Another one is, I've found out that I need to go to the website and address, first of all, do a little bit more research on the smart city agenda. And I've got several of my questions answered just, just now. Thank you for that. And, but I do have a lot of questions about where the drones are coming from, how is the technology going to be protected? Because I found out recently that the CCP gave free drones to a lot of the member nations of, gosh, what's the name? Anyway, and they had to write the software that talks to these drones. And they have access to now, because they wrote the software with the backdoor keylogger in it, they can access all government agencies, FBI, the CIA, and use it against us because it's a data collection technology. And so when they gave away free drones, it wasn't really free. And it's the person that delivered this information said the only way to stop this is to get rid of all of this technology and start from scratch with technology that cannot be hacked and doesn't have backdoors into it. And I think that's why President Trump kicked Huawei out of the country when he took office, is because of that backdoor technology that was being used. So that's my question. Where are you going to put these big charging stations? And what happens if the power goes out?
You're at your two-minute limit.
Okay. Those are just questions, but I found out that I need to address them on the website and send an email to address this stuff. But if you have any comments on that, I would love to hear them.
We, we can't make comments tonight, but you're welcome to contact the city through the email system.
Okay. I will definitely do that. I found that out before, because I haven't been to many of these meetings because it's really hard to show up on a Tuesday night twice a month.
Thank you for your comments tonight. All right, we're ready to move on to item number seven. And just as a comment, we do not have a consent agenda tonight. So item number seven is consider approval of the minutes of April 9, 2024. Councilmember Neves.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve agenda item seven.
Seconded by Councilmember Hill, all in favor?
Long Keena Hossas Smith, Carol Neves, Jen Matthew, Hill in favor and unopposed, the motion carries.
All right, thank you very much. Item number eight is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing and ask the council to consider an approval of an ordinance designating Fulgent Genetics, Inc. Reinvestment Zone Number 116 pursuant to Section 3.212-201 of the Property Redevelopment Tax Abatement Act and authorizing the mayor to sign. I think Ms. Hurley is going to explain all this to us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are here tonight to hold a public hearing for the purpose of creating or designating Reinvestment Zone Number 116 for Fulgent Genetics, Inc. A little bit about that company. Fulgent Genetics, Inc. is a publicly traded company that operates sub-specialty pathology laboratories in California, Georgia, Massachusetts, New York, and Texas. They're looking to purchase the building located at 1111 South Freeport Parkway. That building is 98,000 square feet in size. It was built in 1998 and has homed Avaya Technologies for the last 20 years, but they have vacated, so Fulgent will be occupying that building. The current valuation of the building is $13,786,430. Well, I had an aerial map. I'm not sure if that's, oh, there we go. Okay, so this is the aerial map that shows the existing building located at 1111 South Freeport Parkway. And again, that is south of Fritz Drive and west of Freeport Parkway. And then I will zoom in just so you can see a closer view of the property. This particular location will perform cancer diagnostic testing on patient samples. The company performs the technical laboratory surfaces as well as the professional interpretation by their sub-specialty-trained pathologists. And this particular facility will service dermatology pathology, gastrointestinal pathology, breast pathology, urologic pathology, and surgical pathology. Fulgent Genetics will purchase the building and invest in an additional $5 million in tangible personal property. They'll have 230 full-time employees, and they also generate hotel nights as they bring in people from outside of the, outside of the city. In order to grant a tax abatement, a reinvestment zone must be created by ordinance. And in order to create a reinvestment zone by ordinance, this public hearing must be held. So again, this agenda accomplishes both of those requirements. The public hearing notice for reinvestment note, reinvestment zone Number 116 was published in the Rambler paper, newspaper on April 13, 2024. The reinvestment zone being created for property described as Gateway Business Park 2, Block A, Lot 2, which is 6.8264 acres inside, in size, I'm sorry. So if you'll approve this tonight, a notice of the meeting to approve a tax abatement will be published on our website for 30 days, which is the new state law requirement. And then the incentive package for Fulgent Genetics will come back to y'all at your May 28 city council meeting. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Council, any questions for Ms. Hurley? So this is really just laying the groundwork for the discussion that we're going to have at the end of May?
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Councilmember Walker.
Minnie, has the incentive package already been communicated to Fulgent?
It, we have made an offer to them.
Okay, has that been accepted?
Well, that, they have accepted it and want to move forward, but it will be dependent on y'all approving that.
Yes, okay, okay, thank you very much.
Seeing no comments, I will accept a motion. Councilmember Hina Hossas Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to close the public hearing and approve item eight.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilmember Carol, all in favor?
Walker, Keena Hossas Smith, Carol Neves, Jen Matthew, Hill in favor and unopposed, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number 10 is our city manager reports with project updates, future agendas, and direction from work session. Mr. Land, welcome back.
Thank you. Mayor and council, just a few announcements this evening. As you were made aware, and you participated in the ribbon cutting, South Beltline, the lanes are open. Yes, there is intermittent work going on, so yes, some lanes do close down at times. That's a smile at the mayor for something we talked about yesterday. So anyway, so-
So are we going to mention the other one?
Yeah, no, I'm not.
Okay.
The, they continue to work on Hackberry Traffic Signal. If you go over there right now, it's still closed. Media Landscaping from Hackberry to 635 Dart is continuing to work on franchise relocations at Freeport. Once they are relocated, they'll, storm drain installation across Freeport will occur. Woodhurst, the contractor, is continuing to install utilities from the cul-de-sac to Duck Pond Park, and will begin paving that section in the next couple of weeks. 500 Southwestern, as we refer to as the hangar, or now it's called the Art Annex. The art groups have moved into the hangar out of the old theater on Moore Road. And Village Parkway Ground Storage Tank, you know, that work continues on. The large tank, the work is complete. The smaller tank now has been emptied, and the contractor is beginning to work on the interior repairs. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Item number 10 is mayor and council reports on recent and upcoming events. In case you haven't noticed, there is an election going on. It continues on through Tuesday, April 30. Included on the ballot is Capella's special election for Place 5. The final election day is Saturday, May 4. And please be aware that between now and May 15, we have been invited to challenge the cities of Keller and Southlake in a most-fit city 2024. Engaging in any physical activity, whether it's a walk through the Capella Nature Park, through Andy Brown Park, or taking a group fitness class at the core, helps challenge participants, earn points for Team Capella. Information on how to sign up is located on the, on our Capella website, capelltx.gov. And I encourage you to please engage, because right now Keller and Southlake are kicking our you-know-what. Item number 11, council committee reports concerning items of community involvement with no council action or deliberation permitted. Item A is a report on the Carrollton Farmers Ranch ISD, Lewisville ISD, from Councilmember Mark Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's start off with LISD. Earlier this spring, the board trustees voted to include a bond election on the May 4 ballot. Voters residing within Lewisville ISD boundaries will be asked to consider a total of three propositions that would generate additional funding for maintenance and renovations at various athletic and recreational facilities across the district, as well as five existing high school stadiums and the district's two aquatic centers. Early voting has already started and runs through April 30, and election day is Saturday, May 4. If you want more information, visit lisdbond.com for additional information. Is there anyone out there hiring summer employees, interns, or entry-level workers? Join LISD student at the Summer Job and Internship Fair on May 2. The event will be held at the Bowlin Professional Learning Building from 4 to 6. Find out more details on lisd.net. Congratulations to the 62 students named National Merit Semi-finalists for 2023 and 2024 school year. You can see the full list of finalists at lisd.net. And Lewisville ISD is proud to announce this year's Teacher of the Year and Employee of the Year finalist. Check out the district's Facebook page for video interviews with each of the 10 Teacher of the Year finalists. And winners will be announced at the annual banquet on April 26. And that is all I have, nothing for CFP.
Thank you very much. Item B is a report on the Capella ISD from Councilmember Brianna Hina Hossas Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll start with the last day of school is May 24, and so there is early release on that day and also graduation for both CHS and New Tech. On Friday, April 26, is Capella ISD Night at the Texas Rangers. The game starts at 7:05, and you can go online to rangers.com/scholes to receive discounted tickets. And again, it's Capella night, and usually you don't have to go to the school to actually attend. You can just be part of Capella. Done? The, just like the mayor mentioned, as well as Councilmember Hill, about there being elections, we also have a, I guess, Place 6 for CISD is also on the ballot. So again, want to remind everyone to please come out and vote, because there are several items on the ballot. And then the last item I had was CHS Associate Principal Zane Porter will become the principal of New Tech, starting, beginning in the 2024-2025 school year. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you very much. Item number 12 are public service announcements concerning items of community interest with no council action or deliberation permitted. I have one. We do have a meeting next Tuesday. This will be our fifth Tuesday meeting on May, April 30. We have three items that are going to be on the agenda, including pickleball. I thought I was going to at least get a yay. We're also going to be talking about Old Town parking and digital signage. So those will be starting at 7:30-ish, I'm assuming? Oh, 6, I'm sorry. Those will be starting that meeting at 6 PM. Councilmember Neves, did you have a public service announcement?
Do not have it. So sorry.
Never mind. John raised his hand to remind me that Jim Walker has a public service announcement.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to announce that Capella's newest citizen, Zachary Taylor Thompson, I mean Cooper, Cooper, Zachary Thompson, has just moved back into town from the hospital. My oldest daughter is my new grandson, and he's precious, and we're as blessed as we are thankful. So I want to welcome our new citizen to town.
Well, congratulations. So, Councilmember John. Mayor Protem, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to announce that tomorrow, 11:30 at the Senior and Community Center, again, it is the monthly meeting with the seniors. There's also going to be a Korean cultural performers group that is going to be performing and displaying their cultural performance. So you guys are all invited to be there if you can, and also the citizens are invited as well.
Councilmember Carol.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to take a moment to express my appreciation and actually commend our public safety staff, our fire department, police department. This morning, over in the Bird Streets, over at Mockingbird Elementary, multiple fire trucks and police cars, motorcycles, all lined up in the, in the loop, and welcomed Lauren Gutierrez back to school. Lauren was diagnosed with cancer over, she's a fifth grader there at Mockingbird, and she was diagnosed with cancer over the Christmas break, had surgery right before cotillion started, and has been out for the last three months in chemo treatment. And she, we saw her a couple of weeks ago at the softball game, but then she wasn't able to come back to school. But today she got to come back to school in style, being delivered in a police car. So I just want to commend the staff. These are the little things in this community that makes it a community, and staff goes to the nth degree to show even our children how much they are cared for and loved for in this community. So I just wanted to express my appreciation and commend them for that.
Thank you very much. I had one last item. Councilmember Neves and I had the honor to attend a swearing-in of our newest police officer, Officer Bailey. And he is a Capella native and graduated from New, I think it was New Tech High.
I don't remember that.
Well, anyway, he went through all of the school systems and was a police explorer and, and was extremely excited to join the police department yesterday. And Police Chief Barton informs me that we will, our next swearing-in will include two more officers, and then we have three more lined up after that. So congratulations to our police department. Mayor Protem.
Sorry, Mayor. When Councilmember Carol mentioned about the, the fire department and the cancer, I just want, I do want to mention someone as well. The CP, one of our CPAC members, Trudy White. She is actually going, undergoing chemotherapy, and we just wanted to ask that the, the community send some prayers. And they are actually doing a meal, meal plan, meal train, I guess, going. So if you are interested in providing some services to the meal plan, obviously, all of our CPAC members and volunteers are great assets to this community. And so if you can, go ahead and reach out to the CPAC and contact about how you can provide some support to our CPAC member.
Thank you very much. So with there being no other public service announcements, we're going to recess from the regular session of the Capella City Council and rejoin our executive session of the council meeting. At the end of the executive session, we will come back out and announce any results of the executive session and adjourn this meeting. Thank you for your time and your participation tonight. I have no estimate on the time that we'll be, be away, so thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. The time is 9:58 PM. We are reconvening into the regular session of the Capella City Council. The next item on the agenda is necessary action from the executive session. Councilmember Neves.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve a contract extension through April 30th, 2027, an increase, an increase of base salary to $293,105, and an increase in the deferred compensation to $18,726 for city manager Mike Land.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second? Second by Mayor Protem John John. Any discussion? All in favor?
Walker, Hino Hosses Smith, Carol Neves, Jen Matthew Hill in favor and none oppose the motion carries.
Well, thank you very much. There being no further business before this council, we adjourned at 9:59 PM.